Microphones on. I want to call the meeting to order for the May Kelp Pepper County Planning Commission. I am Cindy Thornhill, the vice chair, because our chairman Sanford Reeves had some surgery a couple of weeks ago, and then in the last week he lost his dad, so he's not going to be here tonight, and I am going to try to fill his shoes. I appreciate, and so would he, any, I guess, thoughts and prayers on his behalf. From that, we're going to move into our meeting. We're called to order, and I'd like to have the commissioners look at the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Hearing none?
Move to approve.
Six.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting, agenda's approved. And then the next item is the approval of the minutes from April 10th meeting. Any comments on the minutes?
Move to approve.
Six.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, we're going to start this evening with the old business, and I'm going to defer it to staff to start that off. And if you would like to, Neil or Sam, go ahead.
We'll consider a revision to Appendix A, the zoning ordinance of the county code, under Article 6, 1A, CC Convenience Center District, Article 6, 1B, Village Center Commercial District, Article 6, C, Commercial Services District. Proposed revisions would remove residential uses from the principal use section of each commercial zoning district and allow only residential uses as a conditional use in each district. The Planning Commission will determine whether the proposed ordinance and amendment is necessary to further the general purpose of promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the public and other purposes found in the Code of Virginia, Section 15, Point 2, 2283 and 2285. Please note, the Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding this proposed amendment on April 10th, 2024.
Madam Chair, good evening, members of the commission. As Neil read there, we did speak last month about this potential zoning text amendment. The Planning Commission held a public hearing, reviewed the ordinance that was referred to you for consideration by the Board's Rules Committee. The Planning Commission charged staff to go back and look at some other alternatives, which we have done. They were alternatives that were actually presented to the Rules Committee a couple of months ago, and those were posted on board docs for your consideration. There's various variations of potential amendments that could add a different flavor than just requiring commercial uses to have a use permit, or, excuse me, residential uses to require a conditional use permit in the residential zoning district, or commercial zoning districts. Just in simple state, the first version there that's labeled Version 1A would be a standalone max 25 percent, which would include mixed developments, so a mixed-use type development. Version 1B that was posted is a standalone residential 25 percent, which you don't get to include as far as your mixed-use calculations. So basically allow only a certain percentage of the zoning to be used for residential, the rest would have to be commercial. Version 2A that was posted there is a standalone residential, not allowed at all, and the max mixed-use residential caps out at 25 percent for the entire use of that property. And then you have a standalone residential, not allowed at all, again, and there's no limit as far as the mixed-use potential. So you could have 70 percent residential and 30 percent commercial, for example. The Version 3 that was reposted was the version that you looked at last month, which is the version that allows residential uses only through the permission of a conditional use permit, or the application of a conditional use permit. And again, just as a reminder, that was the version that was referred to you for consideration by the Board's Rules Committee. Also attached were some other area locality ordinances. We didn't touch on that too much last month, and that's just for your background information. Kelp Pepper wouldn't be alone in restricting residential uses in commercial zoning districts, even though we have allowed as such up until now. There are other localities that do have similar type schemes where they don't allow residential by right in the commercial zoning district. Also posted, just as a reminder, the commercial zoned areas that we have today in the county, there's a map that's attached to board docs as well. And we have three different commercial zoning districts. We have our CC Convenience Center, VC Village Center, and then CS Commercial Services. And a large portion of those that would potentially be impacted by any change would be in the CS zoning district, which is your commercial services zoning district. Happy to go into any of these in detail. These were just additional examples that Planning Commission can consider. And Madam Chair, my goal to you, you know, you can certainly reopen the public hearing if you desire to do that, but it was opened and officially closed last month, so you don't have to reopen the public hearing. We did not advertise it as a public hearing. But if you are going to be willing to consider any of those variations, it may be proper to seek public input on any of those variations if you're going to give serious consideration to recommending approval or that the board consider one of those variations. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and they're all posted on there. They're fairly simple text changes, but they're significant in what they enact, so.
Okay. Could you give us any background on what the Rules Committee was trying to achieve by making the change?
Yeah, so the Rules Committee is looking at several different potential text amendments to the zoning ordinance. This was one of them. You have another one later on your agenda tonight, which is the repeal and replacement potential of our PED ordinance. The Board has also discussed another many potential amendments to our subdivision ordinance in the rural areas as well. I'm sure most of you have been aware of that somewhat. And then this was kind of put into the mix as far as concern about our commercial zoning districts being solely used for residential and not being used for commercial purposes. And the way our ordinance is set up today, that could happen. The Planning Commission asked valid question last month, I don't remember which commissioner, but maybe it was a couple of you, do we have a problem with that to date? And the answer is the same. We have examples where it has happened, but it's not happened on a large scale to date. But the ordinance does allow for that potential, and there was concern by at least members of the Rules Committee. Just so you know, the process, it wasn't just the Rules Committee, it started there. The Rules Committee was a recommendation that went to the full board. The full board did refer that potential amendment to the Planning Commission, so that's how the process works on that, so. The full board did consider it.
Okay. Thank you. And you say we can't ask you questions if I let everybody have a chance to ask some questions? So I'm going to start to the left. Go ahead.
Just related to a few of these, how was the 25 percent determined? Was there a percentage that was actually, you know, how did that come about? And the only reason I ask that is because if you have a case that comes about, you know, and let's say you wanted to do affordable dwelling units or something like that, you'd want to have the right to be different than just 25 percent, because that could further the betterment of the county. If you rule on any of these, to me, it kind of diverts away from that purpose.
Yeah, it certainly could, Commissioner Kilby, and that's, 25 percent is not necessarily a magic number. That's a number that was shown, there again, these were just examples that were shown to the Rules Committee. You know, if you reverse the flip side of this, and this is something that the zoning administrator pointed out, you know, if you have a single family, for example, we allow your home occupation to be 25 percent. So, you know, that's the reverse there, right? So you have a residential use, 25 percent of it can be occupied, you know, as far as a commercial business or a home occupation, if you will. So there's some thought behind that. The other versions don't restrict it, as you saw, to 25 percent, so maybe that would be more appealing to what you're suggesting. And then the other thing, as far as a mixed use, just to remind the commission, you know, later on the agenda, we're actually looking at our PED, and that is a true mixed-use zoning district, so we do have a district for that as well.
I mean, I guess, to date, has there been any major violations of something that would impact?
Not to my knowledge, no, sir.
And based on the map, there's not a ton of parcels that are left to do that.
Right.
So from my perspective, I don't know why we wouldn't just leave it the way it is.
Sure, I understand that.
From my opinion.
Sure.
My opinion, anyway. Thank you.
Keep going this way, go ahead. Okay, Mr. Keith?
Thank you very much. Sam, just let me just ask, on Version 3, where a conditional use permit's required for any residential, residential actually isn't listed under the usage requiring a special use permit?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, was that, is that, is that an oversight, or is it understood?
It probably is, and would probably need to be listed separately. What we did was take out those principal uses and conditional uses in R1, and left that, we didn't take that out, we left that in there and then had that exception clause. But you're right, if you're going to have that exception and the intent is to have it as a conditional use, it should be moved under 6.1A-2-2.
Let me also ask if mobile homes would be permitted as residential in any of these? And the reason I ask is that for a convenience center, there's three parcels in the county, an acre each. If you've got a general store, that doesn't leave a lot of room left over.
That's right.
For dwelling.
Right.
You could move a mobile home in there, so, I mean, but you don't really have room to build anything standalone, you'd have to live above the store. So I'm just wondering if there's any allowances for that on the smaller parcels.
Yeah, and CC is very isolated, as you pointed out, so I don't know that there would be many opportunities for that, anyway. And those are actually pretty set in stone, as you mentioned, we have, I think, a post office on one, you know, and they're not, I don't know that there's open for development. There'd be open for redevelopment, you know, potentially with any changes, so.
And for these three commercial categories, we aren't looking for a one solution that applies to all three. For a convenience center, you could use one of the five versions presented, and for Village Center, another one of the five versions. That is, we're not trying to come up with one solution for all of those.
What was presented to you all last month by the Rules Committee was a one solution for all three zoning districts, and what we've done here is tried to evenly apply them, each of the variations to each of the three zoning districts, but you certainly don't have to take that approach. You could apply it to the CS and not the CC or VC.
Okay, all right, thanks. That's all from me.
Ziegley?
Yes, Sam. I guess I kind of agree with Mr. Kilby's comments at this point, but it says in here, you know, maybe we believe that the original intent of these districts was not, but if I look at that, for the, for the convenience center, it says this district provides for limited commercial, convenience, commercial use to serve rural residents. So it says that the commercial should be limited. If I look at the Village Center, it says Village Center provides for neighborhood commercial areas which are primarily serve the local residents. If we take out residential, we don't have local residents. So I don't see how this makes any, I don't see why we'd want to do this, and again, going back to, there's not a problem that we're trying to solve.
Sure.
Okay?
Madam Chair, just to address Mr. Ziegley's comments there, I don't want that to, the purpose of the commercial zoning districts is to serve the existing residents or future residents that are actually zoning residential. That was, that would be my reading of the statement of intent, not that they allow actually residents. It would have that specifically listed there. So I think the intent, if you look at each of the statement of intent, is pretty clear that it was to provide commercial to residents, not allow both in that same district. That's just my opinion.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead.
Madam Chairman, I have a question for Sam. So just, could you refresh my memory? Beyond advertising the public hearing last time and for this meeting, did you have any occasion to send letters to every landowner? It's a substantial change to their, to their rights.
No, we did not.
Okay.
But we did, we did follow the 15.22204 for proper advertising and adjacent notices like we do on everything.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to have to agree with Mr. Ziegley and Mr. Kilby. I'm not sure what we're solving. That leads me to, how many of these lots in the three districts are unimproved? Do you know, basically, improvement versus unimproved?
There are some, there are some larger, as I pointed out last month, if you remember on the map, if you look at Route 29, south of, or west of town, southwest of town, I had it towards Madison, there's, there's some area there that's zone CS that's undeveloped. The largest chunk is in Brandy Station, and there's a piece there that was zoned, it wasn't originally zoned CS, it was zoned for office commercial use specifically and was proffered as such for an office use in 2000, or around 2000, maybe 2002. But it was through subsequent zoning actions that were taken later, that zoning district was done away, and at that point, it was labeled as CS through that zoning action. At that point, it became unproffered, or no proffers associated, but 50 acres of CS zoning, and has been that way today. That's the largest piece that's undeveloped today for that district.
All right. So just ending with that, I'm inclined to leave it alone for the time being.
Mr. Clancy?
I'll just stick with what I said last time. I think it's solving a problem, trying to solve a problem that we don't have, so that's how I feel about it.
Mr. Grover?
Yeah, I feel the same way. I'm inclined with, to agree with my fellow Planning Commission members. I don't really understand the point behind it, or what we're trying to achieve with this. I think we should just leave it alone.
Okay. Ms. Reames?
I disagree. I don't look at it as we're, we're not trying to fix an existing problem. I think it's trying to be forward-thinking and proactive and prevent there from being a problem. You know, if it's, my personal opinion, it is zoned the way that it is for a reason, and those are the things that need to go there, not houses. And to me, that's, that's, I mean, what the zoning is for is that dictates what goes there. And that zoning, like Sam was saying, is for those services to the existing residents around it, not to add residents to it. So I'm in favor of what the board actually recommended and not allowing any residential in it. And like I said, that's, that's being forward-thinking, not, not that there is a current problem, but it's being more forward-thinking than reactive.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Yeah, I think that what we were asked to look at was, how do we keep one of the commercial categories from becoming substantially residential? And, and so, I mean, I think we do have a role in examining it from that point of view, and I think maybe a 25 percent limit on residential in one of these areas, however that's applied, I think makes sense, if we want to make sure that the, that the original intent of the commercial categories stays there. So to me, to establish a limit, however we want to apply it, makes sense, and I would support coming up with a way to do that.
Okay, Mr. Grover?
I mean, I understand what's being said, but from the perspective of property owner rights, I mean, the current zoning that's existed for, I don't know how many years, Sam, has allowed this as a use, and I think at a minimum, these property owners should be notified and should be here this evening to speak on how they feel about their property being, the zoning and the rights of their property being changed, and they should have a say in that, I think. But again, I'm inclined for it to be left alone. And again, I'm for property owner rights, and today, the current zoning allows, you know, residential use in these districts.
Okay.
Again, these owners should have, I think, a say in this.
All right. Anyone else before I talk?
Sam, could this be tabled again, and those owners notified to see if any of them actually
even come to speak for or against anything?
Yeah, we could, you know, we could take that tactic. As I mentioned, we've followed the protocol that we need to, which we do on everything. You can always exceed that, you know, and go above that and notify, it's not an exhaustive list, like maybe some other potential future exercises where we would notify a lot more. But in this effort, we would and could notify every single commercial landowner. You heard from the largest affected landowner last month, so he is properly notified, and he's been able to share his comments and concerns that you all received last month through your public hearing that you opened. So I think that that effort was reached, at least to some of the audience, so.
Anyone else before I summarize?
Just say one more thing. I mean, I guess my thought on it is, and this is encountered in other jurisdictions as well, in the terms of that if someone purchased, to what Doug was saying, basically, if someone purchased property based on that zoning, they have the right to develop it based on that zoning. There's no grandfathering, there's no, there's no delay for that ownership rights, and essentially, from a legal perspective, it could be considered as a taking. I don't know if that's been discussed with the attorney or not, but you're basically, could be potentially changing the zoning of someone's property that they had accounted for. They may have spent money on doing design, they may have been, spent other monies involved in it, and I think it's, it's a challenge to move forward with this. That's my perspective. Thank you.
Okay, I will take my turn now. I don't think we need to do anything either. I don't see what's broken and what we need to fix. It didn't come in with clear assignment that we want to decrease the density around the commercial. It was, and there's options that have it all over the board. So I'm not for making a change at this point in time. If there is some clear direction, perhaps, and notification of the landowners that are impacted, but there are a lot of small stores and perhaps larger components where those people didn't come last time, they're not here tonight, probably, I see one person is, but I think it needs to be left alone. I think it is a taking of their rights. They lease these stores, they don't necessarily own them, you know, it's a little business that exists today. I just don't really want to impact any of that existing allowances. I'm not for that, so. With that, I would entertain a motion if anyone wants to make a motion. Yes, sir?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend that the Board of Supervisors, that in case ETA 1124-1, propose amendment to zoning ordinance to consider revision to Appendix A, Article 6, 1A, Article 6, 1B, and Article 6, C, that since it does, it is not necessary for the further general purpose of promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the public and other proposed, other purposes found in Code of Virginia, recommend that the ordinance not be adopted.
Second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed. Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is new business. Neil?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have case number Z46224-1. It's a request by Red Ace Data Center LLC, Ari Firu's body, to replace, or, excuse me, to rezone 69.19 acres from RA, Rural Area, to LI, Light Industrial. The applicant is proposing to use the property for a data center campus per Article 7.1A-2-2.5, including an area for an electrical substation and associated equipment. The property is located at the corner of Knolls Mill Road, 666, and Kaiser Road, 799, in the Stevensburg Magisterial District. It's found on Tax Map 41, Parcels 97, 97B, and 97C. The Planning Commission will consider review and make findings whether the general location or approximate location, character, and extent of the proposed substation are substantially in accord with the county's adopted comprehensive plan or part thereof in accordance with the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, Section 15.2-2232. The Planning Commission is also responsible for making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors as to approval or disapproval of this rezoning.
There's a commission on the screen highlight the parcel in red, parcels in red that are seeking to be resumed from rural area today to light industrial, specifically for data center facility. The applicant submitted an application in proper form. The application also has come with two versions of a proffer statement, most recently in April, which has been included in your package, to revise a little bit from their original submission, a concept plan that was provided as well. We also now have a TIA, which is a traffic impact assessment for the development as well, that has been reviewed, and other documents in response to comments that were received from our agency reviews, such as VDOT, the Soil and Water Conservation District, Fire and Rescue Association, and others. And the applicant has had a chance to review those comments and provide a response, which was also included in your package. To set the stage a little bit for where this property is located, you have, if I can get, oh, it's on a cursor, so it's not a pointer for some reason, so, my red dot's not there, but a little white cursor's floating around on the screen, if you can see it. This is the town wastewater facility here, McDevitt, Chandler, intersection here, coming onto Kaiser Road, Knolls Mill, back into town here. Hatched area is floodplain area, I wish the applicant stays clear of with their proposal. In fact, they're proposed and have a proffer commitment to reforest this area, which was a recommendation by the Soil and Water Conservation District, and have several thousand, or about 1,000 feet or more of road furniture here along Kaiser Road, and the applicant is prepared to donate road right away for renovation, or for improvement projects there as well. Just a little different flavor here from an aerial image, and again, just shows the parcel in red outline here on this, this graphic. It's primarily just been farmed over the years, now a red dot shows up, all right. And you got a single family here. One thing I wanted to point out, again, is Knolls Mill Road here, and just off the screen, in the orange area, was slated and is under development for residential development, which is an age-restricted, it's Crusoe Homes, or Shea Homes, I think now, that will be building that project, and they're working actively on that project now. Couple of highlights, and these were pointed out in the staff report, this property is part of the technology zone, as adopted by the Board of Supervisors. This property falls right here, in the singular unified technology zone, which was a change that the Board recently made as of last year. A little bit harder to see, but this is a future land use map that was adopted last year by the county, and you're down here in the purple area, which is slated for industrial, and again, this property falls in the future land use plan for industrial purposes, and that is the category you need for a data center. This shows the concept plan of what the applicant is proposing for the property, and the applicant can go into further detail about this, I'm going to leave that on the screen for them. But Madam Chair, just from the staff report, just some of the high-level comments, again, the proffer statement clearly states the specific use, and that is only for a data center for this facility, for this property. The staff's opinion, it does fit the future land use category, is designated for future industrial. It is shown in the Kelp Pepper County Technology Zone, and actually is one of the last remaining pieces that does not have zoning for a data center left in that technology zone. We did point out some concerns that we agreed with, with the various agencies that weighed in. The applicant has addressed many of those, however, in the most recent proffer statement, a little bit further. We do believe there's maybe some, a little bit further clarification on some things, but they're minor overall. The site's within the urban services boundary, the site, if proposed, or if it goes forward as proposal, certainly would enhance economic development potential in the county. And we, one area that is new to the comprehensive plan last year that this would fall under is, there's a note about intensive or extensive non-agricultural, this is certainly non-agricultural land consumptive development section, and there's, there's some notes in there, and specifically in that section, that talk about providing some type of an analysis, so there's a noise generation or viewshed, and that's certainly up to the Planning Commission and the Board when you're reviewing these types of applications. But if you remember, we specifically called out large-scale developments to try to encourage a little more analysis upfront. The applicant has done some as far as the traffic is concerned, maybe there could be some more room for some visual or some viewshed analysis and that type of thing, and the applicant certainly can address that if needed. But Madam Chair, staff is prepared to recommend approval as we work through those proffer statement that we have, any other concerns that the Planning Commission has, and the applicant has a pretty full team here as well tonight in the audience, and can go through their presentation and answer any questions as well. And it is advertised for a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Sam. Anyone have any quick questions for staff, and then I'll ask the applicant to come forward? I have one. When does the tax, on the technology zone, there's some tax relief. When does that start? When they build, when they occupy, where does that? Where does that?
Yeah, so it wouldn't start until they had something there taxable, which would be the building and the equipment inside.
Completed building?
Yes. It's based on the personal property equipment tax.
Okay. All right. Would the applicant like to come forward and bring the representatives and give us their presentation? State your name, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Rex Edwards. I'm an attorney practicing here in Kelpaper with Davies, Beryl, Will, Llewellyn, and Edwards, assisting the applicant Red Ace Data Center. As Sam said, there's quite the team here. Unfortunately, my job really is only to introduce the team to you all this evening, and certainly make myself available should you have any specific questions for me. Michael Arm is present. Michael Arm is a consultant on the project. We also have Zach Ben Limley, who is the project director. And if you have specific questions about the concept, we have with us Jim Madison, a PE, who is involved with the development plan and the plan that's up on the screen through LDC. And then if there are traffic questions or issues you have, we have specifically with us Kevin Sitzman here, who has been involved in the transportation planning. So with your permission, I will invite Michael Arm to address the commission and be available if you have any specific questions.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, thank you. Yeah, my name is Michael Arm. I'm here representing Red Ace and their application. I think staff covered the important essentials of this project, one being that this property is shown in your comprehensive plan that was fairly recently adopted as an area to be industrial in the future uses. And last year, I believe it was late fall, when the county amended the tech overlay zone, they took out several parcels that were in it, especially those that were extending up towards Brandy Station. And I think, I'm in the data center development industry. I think rightfully so, they shrunk the area down. I think it was a little bit too aggressive, and they kept it largely within the environs of the, between the town and the bypass, what I call the environs of the town. This, in fact, was the only site, if I'm not mistaken, and staff can correct me, that at the time that you shrunk the map down, you added a site back in. This was, this site specifically was intended to be added in as a potential data center site. Other important item is that it is in the environs of the town. It's in the utility district that the county has adopted, where town water and sewer are shared with the county. This is an illustrative plan. We do not know exactly what things will look like, and I know that's a little hard for some people to digest. Let me tell you a little bit about what's happening in the development of the data center world these days. The data center world is changing very rapidly. The big buzzword in the last year is the AI. And AI is driving the design and the change of the buildings. So by the time the power is available, and I'll use that as a segue to talk about power, and then I'll go back to the design, it will take at least four years to build this substation, if not longer. All substations today, it doesn't matter where they are in the US, are taking that long. The, this power that comes in from the Stevensburg area into the town is being upgraded to take on the availability of providing power to this and the other data center projects that are planned out in the McDevitt Road area, McDevitt Drive area. They're going from 115 KV service coming into town now to 230 KV, doubling the size of those lines. The high voltage breakers that have to be used in those substations, the long lead equipment, takes four years to get right now. You can't get breakers in under four years. So if a substation, if this was approved within the next, let's call it 30 days, 60 days, and we determined to go forward and start the design on the substation with Dominion Power, this would take at least four years, potentially even five years, before they could deliver power. So if you work backwards from that, you don't want to design your data centers today because everything will have changed by the time the power is available. So if you work backwards from four to five years from now, you're probably backing that up about 18 months to start the design. So you're at least two and, let's call it two and a half years out from designing these data centers. A lot is happening. A lot is changing, and we just don't know exactly. We assume they'll take pretty much the same size and configuration, but it's just a very, very large unknown at this point. I would like to point out that we've worked closely. You can see, it's a little hard to see, but the gray sliver, that arc that is to the northwest of Building A, VDOT would like to change the radius of this road. When you make a longer radius like that, it pulls in towards the property, so we have to give the right of way for the ultimate design. What that will do will soften that curve, so that it'll be easier to take that curve. It'll help with the speed limit there. We have placed the primary entrance at an area where we have good site distance to get out onto Kaiser Road. That secondary entrance, I kind of wish we had labeled that a little bit differently. It's more of an emergency entrance that's not used on a daily basis. Data center campuses, because everything needs redundancy and reliability, that second entrance would be an emergency access. Should there be, something happen at the primary entrance, an accident out front, an emergency vehicle is how to come to the, to the site that could enter on the secondary entrance. The other very, very rare time that a secondary entrance would be used, if down the road, some very, very large piece of equipment had to be moved in, and maybe it couldn't get through the security area because, you know, you have the little guard shack in the middle, and the driveway is only so wide, that secondary entrance might serve to bring in some large piece of equipment sometime down the road. But if that gate is open once or twice a year, I think that would be probably it. The substation's planned in the southeast corner. We didn't want it out on Kaiser Road. We wanted it back tucked in behind the buildings. Immediately to the south of it, its immediate neighbor is the wastewater treatment facility for the town of Kelpaper. And to the rear of it is an area that we're going to reforest in that floodplain that is, that's actually a mountain run in that light green area. And we plan on, we've been working with staff and with the Conservation District on their request to do some reforestation of that area. So that's primarily what I have to tell you. We have our other experts here. Madam Chair, however you'd like to proceed.
I think that we probably want us to be able to ask questions, and you can either answer or defer to.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay, so let's go down through, we'll start with Mr. Kilby.
Sure. Can you go over how the electricity is going to get to the substation?
Okay, that is, that is up to the State Corporation Commission, because this will be a substation that'll be stepping down from 230 KV to 34.5 KV, and it is in their purview to determine what the actual routing would be. We sense that the shortest routing will be probably the most likely, which would take it across the back of the wastewater treatment plant coming, you know, if you're looking at this plan here, the east-west line, the 230 KV line, the 115 that's being upgraded to 230, lies below what you see here. So it would have to have a short run north to get to that substation. And we believe that it would probably end up in the rear portion of the, they would work with the town to do something along the back of the wastewater treatment plant. The, yeah, thank you. That helps. I also believe that they can put it through the floodplain, that the towers can actually be placed in the floodplain if need be. The way the system works with the State Corporation Commission is, when a substation is planned, Dominion proposes three or four routes to get to it, and the State Corporation Commission tells them which one they prefer, and then they pursue that.
Yeah, I was just, I didn't know if there had been any discussions with them already about it.
We've had some preliminary discussion, yeah, we've had some preliminary discussions with Dominion, but it's sort of a catch-22. Dominion doesn't really want to talk about it until the property's owned, and I know you want to know about it before you zone the property. So, I mean, you've seen this on other projects. This is what we're running into. We don't have a commitment from them as to even what they were planning on showing the SEC at this point. They want to know that this is going to be a data center campus.
In terms of, since the plan, the site plan, based on what you're saying, won't come in for like three years from now, something along those lines?
I would think the earliest two and a half years, yeah.
So is the intent that the stormwater management facility will be designed based on the latest DEQ standards? Because currently, the design is changing as of July 1, and then be readopted in July 1, 2025?
Yes. I don't think by being rezoned, I don't think that would grandfather us with DEQ. I think we'd have to have a design at the time that meets the latest.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember in the plan whether or not it actually states that the design will be in conformance with the latest DEQ standard at that time.
We can certainly add that to the, if we need to, we can add that to the proffer.
Just to make sure, because we've had some situations where, if you run the VRM spreadsheet, you're going to get a different sized facility based on, based on it.
No, that is our intent, and we will gladly make that, add that to the proffer if that's the wish of the.
And then the other question would be about the floodplain in that area. And you may have not done any preliminary sizing of the facility or anything of that nature at this point, but making sure that, you know, looking at the 100-year, whether you're going to provide 100-year detention in your stormwater management facility since you're adjacent to a stream, you'd have to look at the peak hydrographs and how they correlate to each other in terms of whether you would actually increase the flood level. So we'd want to make sure that the flood level is increased based on the development, so that if need be, you'd be willing to provide a 100-year detention as opposed to just 10-year detention in your facility.
I'll let the engineer answer, and we should probably have him come up, but I can just tell you, Lance, that based on prior experience with similar sites, we are so far down in the watershed, this may be a site where it doesn't make sense.
And it may not.
Yeah. It may only make sense to do quality control and not quantity control. We might be adding to the peak by detaining.
It could be a situation where you don't even want a facility there to some extent. But, you know, whether or not that's been evaluated as part of the application, I don't know.
We're not really at that stage. Yeah. He's nodding his head, yes.
All right. And then as far as the, if you go back to the plan view, if you could, for a second. So obviously, it's on a curve, so the entrance is on a curve.
Yes.
You potentially have a site distance concern there at the entrance, because you're going to be, basically, your site distance line will be cutting through the property where you might need to be doing buffering. So I don't know if that's been evaluated or not.
We have our, we have both our civil engineer and our transportation engineer here. Why don't I ask them to please come up?
Good evening. I'm Jim Madison with LDC, and site distance has been evaluated with the road improvements that we're committing to.
Okay. So there's no issues with any of that?
No.
Okay. And then as far as the road improvements go, I'd like to talk about the traffic study. I guess that's more for you, Kevin. So can you give us a quick overview of the traffic study? And the reason I ask that is because, and where I'm going, is the comprehensive plan shows that intersection as a level of service C, and your report shows it as a level of service D, but it says it's acceptable. But the comp plan says level C is what's deemed as acceptable, so I'm trying to understand how level service D is acceptable when the comp plan says level C is, but D is not.
Okay. For the record, Kevin Sitzman with Grove Slade. We prepared the traffic impact study as referenced. The, just super quick overview, we took traffic counts at the intersection of Knolls Mill and Kaiser and at Chandler, just to the south. And we evaluated those two intersections and the site driveway for three conditions. Existing conditions today, future conditions without the development of this particular site, and future conditions with the development of the site. And so the traffic impact analysis looks at the impact of the site by comparing the future without and future with to measure that difference. The, the site being mostly empty space as far as people goes, generates very little traffic, even though there's, they're large buildings, generates about 35 AM peak hour trips, sorry, 35 PM peak hour trips, and about 100 AM peak hour trips, adding to the road network, spread out amongst the various directions. People can come and go, and then spread out over the 60 minutes of each of those hours. So there's not a lot of concentrated additional traffic, although, you know, those roads are not highways by any means. So the, the increase in delay is, is pretty minimal. The way we measure the impact is through seconds of delay at the various intersections. That's fairly minimal. When we scoped the traffic impact study with, with your staff and with VDOT staff, the scoping document talked about level of service D as the, as the threshold for this particular study. And so the, the findings of the study are that the only place where there's a delay problem, problem, would be with the site, would be at the intersection of Knolls Mill going northbound on Kaiser Road during the afternoon. And that was exceeding the, the level of service D threshold by one second. So the threshold is 35. The delay with the, with the site would be 36 seconds. If there were a right turn taper that were added, so that a car could turn right while somebody was waiting to turn left at the stop sign, it would actually improve to delays less than, or conditions better than, the future without development conditions. So that was, that was noted in, in the traffic study. So hopefully, that's a, that's a quick overview that helps.
Is that noted in the proffer that you would put the paper in, or?
So the way that the proffer is, is written so that it can be flexible as to how, how it's designed, how it's implemented, and I forget the proffer number, but I believe it's, it's written as a, as a cash proffer.
Yep.
Madam Chair, to answer your question on that, the, one of the reasons for not specifically just doing the taper lane is, in discussions with staff, the intent there is to actually reconfigure that intersection and to make that one of the small roundabouts. So if we were to put a taper lane in, it would probably just be torn out and replaced with the circle. So by doing this as cash, the cash could be used towards the ultimate improvement.
How much was the cash?
What is our?
Fifty, $50,000.
Fifty what?
Fifty, is it 50? Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
How much does a roundabout cost, or who's paying for the roundabout?
Well, the roundabout will be beat up because it serves the greater area, other than just the site, so.
What do you think a roundabout costs?
A couple million dollars.
And how much are you offering?
$50,000.
Okay.
Well, it's for our, we have a one-second impact.
One second? I've been at that intersection a lot.
One-second impact in the afternoon rush.
Okay.
Got a few more questions follow up to that. Mr. Sitzman, did you evaluate the severe crashes or accident data, crash data, related to these intersections?
I do not believe we did. I don't believe that was part of the study scope for the, as defined by VDOT. I'm just double checking, but I don't believe we did. We did not.
And then question for staff. Comp plan says level of service C, in accordance with page 3-17 for Bragg's Corner, as well as page 3-7, which basically talks, level of C or higher is deemed acceptable. Is that correct?
That's correct, which is a guide, yes, sir. As always.
I was just curious how the D came about from the county's perspective.
It's not a requirement that we can ask for, like a design standard or an ordinance, but it's in there and it is a guide, so.
Okay. Yeah, just, I'm used to data centers providing a lot more funding for road improvements. Let me put it that way. So seems small in comparison based on that, but that's my opinion. A couple other things not necessary for Kevin. Noise study, addressing noise associated with the facility. Can you share a little bit about that?
I believe we have something in the proffer, so I'm checking.
Okay, no problem.
All right, I'm looking through proffers under two, development and use. J addresses noise. A noise impact assessment shall be completed when the applicant files for site plan approval. Because again, we don't know the design of the buildings at this point. We don't even know what the cooling systems will be. know what the cooling systems will be, that's what really drives the noise.
Gotcha. That's all I have at this time.
Okay.
Okay, so my first question, comment is going to be, would you guys consider adding to your proffer statement to donate funds to the local FFA chapters and 4H since you are taking out land that is currently being actively farmed? You've donated or you've proffered seventy-five thousand to the Sea Tech, but as more agriculture land is being used, we need those funds to educate our children how to keep growing food on less and less land.
That I'd have to look to the applicant. The applicant's willing to make a, a proffer. I, we'd have to work out what that figure is.
Can I piggyback on that one second? So that building that's there, the barn is used for weigh-in for the stairs, not anymore? All right, so we don't care about the building. Do you take possession of that property right away or are you going to do it?
I'll have to ask the applicant.
Madam Chair, if I could interrupt just quickly, when, when you're talking about the proffer statement, I'm just going to encourage the planning commission to, to talk about your concerns and encourage the applicant to find ways to mitigate those concerns. Please don't ask them for a proffer, you're, you're not allowed to do that, so.
Okay. So do you take possession of it right away?
For the record, my name is Zach Ben Lemley. Not right away, so with the Kaiser family, what we did was a two-year, zero dollar leaseback, like Michael mentioned, I mean, it's going to take some time. And so they wanted to continue to farm it, and that's the, similar what we did on the other property they were actually here last night for, down on Route Three. So not immediately. If it continues to be delayed, if it takes up to five years, I don't see why we wouldn't want to continue to extend that.
Thank you.
Then my next question is in regards to onsite controls shall include any fuel storage vessels over five hundred and fifty gallons being double walled with an interstitial leak detection monitored twenty-four hours a day. Any facility utilizing stored fuels will have countermeasures in place at any point of transfer or offloading. Any such facility shall also have contracted hazardous material cleanup contractors on call. So, I mean, are we looking at potentially a five hundred and fifty gallon tank per building?
No, there'll be more than that. Five hundred and fifty is just the limit, that we don't have to do it below that five fifty. There'll be, and again, the technology can change between now and then, but in today's design, there would be diesel backup generators with this data center, these data center buildings, that says there would be within the other data center that you've approved in the county. They would have what you would call, most likely they would have what are belly tanks, tanks that sit underneath each generator that are double walled with the interstitial monitoring and so on.
And then what, I don't know if you can answer this yet or not, with the technology changing, but I mean, is the plan to have it water cooled? What's, what are we looking at, water consumption, fire suppression?
That's, that's actually a really good question, and again, with things changing, we don't know, but data centers, the good news and the bad news, data centers as they start accommodating these higher requirements, compute requirements for AI and machine learning labs are going to use less water because you can't cool, you can only cool so much with water. You have to start going to more of these air cooled units that then, well, it gets real technical, but the air cooled units take care of the primary loop and then the secondary loop that actually goes into the data rooms would have a water blight call mixed, that's a closed loop system. And they're getting down to the point where they're cooling right at the chip. I mean, it's, it's getting very advanced. So they use less water, they don't actually, they use very little makeup water, they use more power though, to get what they want to get done.
Any thoughts on fire suppression system though?
Fire suppression on these buildings is very intense. They will have a fire suppression system and they'll have a very early monitoring for smoke and fire. They have a very special, what they call the Vespa system, very early smoke detection system.
So, I mean, a good possibility though, that it'll be a water system?
Yeah, yeah, of course, but the only time that that water flows is if there's a fire.
That's all I have for now.
Okay, Mr. Price? Thank you. Have you given any thought as to how you'll protect Mountain Run from dirt runoff during construction and possible fuel spill contamination?
Well, the fuel spill, I think was addressed in the proffer that we were just discussing. There are both state and federal regulations for that and we intend to actually take that up a notch. The, for the erosion control, we would have to meet all the requirements of the Soil and Water Conservation District, the state. What's generally done is you use what's called super silt fence when you're up against a project like this. It's the fencing that actually has the chain link fencing behind it, it's much sturdier, you don't have all the blowouts that you normally do. We could proffer to that on the east side up against the floodplain, that we would use, you know, super silt fence and advanced, you know, the, the most available, you know, advanced systems.
Okay. Do you know what kind of security fencing that you use, or is it still too far out?
It's still too far out, but almost every data center that you see around here has the same sort of fencing.
Black?
The, the black, it's generically called the Ameristar. Ameristar is just one, it's, it's like calling a tissue Kleenex. You call the fence Ameristar, that's the fabricator, but there are other people who make it. It's generally a black fence, metal fence with just a curved top to it. There's no barbed wire, just a curved top, it curves out so you can't climb up against it.
Yeah, so I understand at this point, you don't know if you'll have three buildings or four, or what the building height might be, because you have one illustration that's in our packet, it's got three buildings, one that's got four buildings.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know if it'll be three or four, it, it has to do with what the design will look like at that point. As far as the height, we would just say that we would meet what the county, I believe it's your, your overlay describes the height for a data center, we will have to meet what the technical over, technical data center overlay height requirement is.
Okay, and this is also for staff, but you know, we've talked to other data center applicants recently, I mean, we've really drilled down into some of these details about where the fuel tank's going to be, where the generator's going to be, how many buildings, how high they're going to be. And I understand that the technology's developing very quickly, so it's difficult to look three or four years down the road and know exactly what you're going to be dealing with. But this is the first time I think that we've kind of gone into this point where a lot of these specifics were still unknown. Is that, is that an unreasonable thing to bring up?
As far as the, like, building characteristics?
Building number, yeah, all that sort of thing.
Those things were certainly discussed with other rezoning applications, but there, you know, there really weren't a lot of proffers other than screening for the equipment, making sure that generators were oriented away from roads, for example, things like that. There were some limited proffers with some of the rezonies, but I will share with each one that we've done recently, they've all been a little bit unique in their location and then as such, the proffers and the concept plans have been unique too. So they're a little bit different.
If, if the planning commission recommends approval tonight, will you continue to work with the applicant on the proffers before it gets to the board? Did I, did I hear you say that earlier?
We, we certainly can, you know, the applicant always has the, the chance to revise their proffer statement before the board supervisors, they, they can do it up to two weeks ahead of the, any public hearing that the board supervisors would advertise. And we, and we always do. The planning commission, you know, usually points out several things that, that either weren't thought about or that needs to be refined, and a lot of times it does change and modify between the planning commission and the board, so.
I've already heard, we've only been through this side of the desk tonight, and I've already heard, I think, three items that we need to work on.
Okay.
Some commitments on the erosion control, some commitments on supporting some agricultural programs, and looking at the transportation proffer amount, so. Yes, we will be working on things.
One final thing for staff, if I could. They've offered forty-seven feet of right away, and I noticed in the packet, I think staff mentioned that there's some concerns about whether or not that's enough. So how much more you think would be enough?
We, we, the applicant has analyzed that and VDOT pointed a, a certain standard, I think it was the GS seven standard for, for collector type road, rural collector type road here, and, and that should be adequate enough right away. It's just, it's hard without fully designing the improvement to always know what that true right away would need. The good thing is with this project, not only they're, through their proffer statement seeking to dedicate and reserve that right away, is they're pretty much pushing things a little bit further in where we have a little bit more room than actually forty-seven feet, except on what I would call probably the straight section, if there is a straight section of Kaiser Road, you know, where we would have, you know, potential realignment or not realignment, but improvement would be in this curvature here, this geometry here, a little bit too maybe. But the applicant could try to work on further details, Mr. Price, you know, to, to, there is not a specific standard that the comp plan points out for this road, there's not a specific standard that the comp plan actually points out to go back to the intersection discussion either. So the applicant is flying in the dark a little bit with the county to try to figure out what those needs really are.
Yeah.
You know, so I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go to this side of the table, Mr. Zegley?
Yes, sir. You talked about, you know, where, how are you going to get your power to the plant? In terms of just Dominion power lines though, this plant is, this, this data center is not going to drive Dominion to have to bring in larger poles than is already there, is that correct?
So here's our understanding, Dominion made a presentation to the county last week on what their future plans are on this upgrade that they're doing and what it serves, and this property was included in that discussion. So it is our understanding that this one hundred and fifteen KV upgrade that they're doing from Stevensburg into the town, when I say one hundred and fifteen KV upgrade, that up, going from one fifteen to two hundred and thirty KV is providing power for a number of data center projects that have already been approved by the county, and that this is also, that's our understanding, that this is included per that discussion they had with the, and I, I wasn't present for it, I assume Sam, that you were.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Zegley, there have been discussions, Dominion's actively working on transmission routing plans. There's a project underway that Dominion has already had hearings on, and that's an upgraded the existing line coming from Stevensburg back to town that, that Mr. Arm is referring to. There's also discussions now in response to other data center approvals that have already happened inside the town and the county that would go and beyond and potentially seek further upgrades. The routing of that upgrade is in early stages of planning right now, and that's what Dominion was sharing with the county was potential routes, and those have not been disclosed fully yet, so, but they are working on those upgrades to back Mr. Arm up as far as the discussion of capacity with that other second future upgrade, yes, they are considering the Kaiser property to be used and, and for data center for that reason.
Okay. We had discussions about the Kaiser, Knolls Mill Road intersection, and so you talked, you talked about the turn lane, you said maybe that's not the right thing to do, maybe you're going to put a traffic circle in there. There's a bridge right there.
Yes, there is.
Okay, would that have to be widened?
That's a good question, I don't know, I don't know, I don't, I'm not even sure if VDOT's ever shared any conceptual layouts with you yet for how they would treat that.
No, and, and I'll be, you know, to, to speak to that issue directly, that is not an intersection of priority at this point for the county for our roundabout. We have applied for other funds for other roundabouts, but this one is pretty far down the list at this point, just wanted to share that.
Okay, and if, if you had to either expand that bridge or make another bridge, is that a VDOT bill, is that, their bill or the county bill?
These are VDOT roads, they're maintained by VDOT, so it would be in conjunction with VDOT and coordination with VDOT. It may be hard to rework that intersection in its current location, so there are other things that we would consider, but we also could potentially accommodate that, that exactual location too with some improvements. It's just tough to tell right now. I will share on the other end of things, as you know, there is a roundabout that is being built, it's just in survey, the utilities are being relocated now on the Route Three side of McDevitt. So that is actively in the project, we have money that's allocated, is moving forward to do that. That will service this area as well. When you get out to Knolls Mill and Rogers Road, we know that there are some issues there that we're going to be working through, not only through the county, but potentially with other applications that we're reviewing, as well as Knolls Mill past Williams Mill, the, the age restricted development there to the north. There, we're going to be serviced by an R cut that the applicant for that development will be paying for and is actually going to be installed on this year. So there are some improvements to the area, the one that's missing is the one you're talking about, it's just there is not a set plan for how to address this right now, and that's very difficult for the applicant to address that fully because of that, so.
Okay, I, I guess I'm, I'm feeling a little hung out to dry here, so we're saying there's no plan for this intersection, but we know it's a problem.
This, this intersection actually functions at an acceptable level of service. What Commissioner Kilby pointed out is that we would like to have a better level of service in according to the conference of plan, and that's where it may see.
Okay, you're talking about C and D.
And Mr. Sitzman actually pointed out some potential improvements that could get us to that higher level of service.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see. Yeah, it kind of hurts my head, I think Professor Price was talking to, you know, I'm, we're not sure about how many buildings are, you, you, you're going to have generators though, they're going to be outside somewhere, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the light tan area behind Building A, Building B and Building C, it, with the, like, the little, what looks like a fence designation, those are the generator yards that we assume will go in.
Okay. One of your neighbors to the, to the north, I guess, is Williams Mill Village, which is a senior, not the town, but a senior village.
Okay.
So, so they've built them houses up there, and this was zone RA at the time. So now if we change this to, to light industrial, have you done any, any look at, at visual impacts to that development or, or the noise impacts to that development?
Well, a couple things there. The, that was zoned at the time that this was, this parcel was also shown to be future industrial use and potentially a data center per your current ordinances, so.
The plan, but, but not the zone.
Plan, plan, but then assume that it could be approved as such.
Okay.
We have proffered that we will do the noise study at site plan because we don't know the building systems yet, okay. As far as, as the visible view line, I was discussing this prior to the meeting with Sam, I drove around there this evening before coming in here. The mountain, Mountain Run cuts through between this property and that property, and it has a very wide floodplain and is heavily treed. So I'm assuming that nobody's going to be cutting the trees down in the floodplain. There's also a fairly heavy amount of trees, if you look where our primary entrance is shown, and you look to the left, plan left or to the west, on the opposite side of the street, it's also very heavily treed, and I don't know that anything can ever get built between there and, if you look how close Mountain Run is to the, to the road, I'm not sure that that will ever change quite frankly. But if the, if the county would like us to look at specific sightlines, we can do that, we would just have to be told, we, we don't know what the plan is, we know that there's a fifty-five and over community going there, we don't know where the units are, we'd, you'd have to show us where you would want us to analyze it, and we'd have to be given elevations, starting elevations on that site, where, where the, the viewpoint would be from, so.
You, you mentioned you've had a lot of experience in developing data centers and so forth. So we talk about noise, noise analysis and noise impact analysis, and first thing, it hits anybody's minds, well, how's, what's the loudest it could be at the edge of the property? My, and I don't have any personal experience in this, my understanding is that people say it's not the magnitude of the noise, it's the constant hum of a noise. Are there, you know, values or something that, that's, that are out there that give guidance as to what's acceptable and what's not?
Well, what's acceptable and what's not is what's in your county ordinance, that's, that's the only thing that we can live by, is we, you know, we know that there's certain limitations that we cannot exceed. I, I think you have a day and night differential, if I'm not mistaken, which is good, so it actually comes down at nighttime, so we have to design for whenever we get to these building systems, we have to design to those noise standards.
Okay. Just, and, and I'll, we're going to just have comments of staff later?
Yes, we'll go through Michael, three more, we'll come back.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, certainly.
Okay, you all have been thorough. Within the last few years, the town planning commission and the county planning commission have been presented a, an area transportation plan that focused quite a bit on connecting future residential areas, especially in this area, between educational area, data center area, potential growth at the Armstrong property and then the Knolls Mill subdivision. Some of those plans that looked really good to us were planned Some of those plans that looked really good to us were planning not only for road improvements on this road, but bicycle and pedestrian areas, lanes. So does your 47 feet happen to accommodate for pedestrian or cycle traffic in a separate path, perhaps?
Let me ask the engineer, because he, he used the standard that VDOT gave him for the road section, so let me ask what that includes, okay?
Okay.
What we show on our plan contemplates a 10-foot shared use path that's separated from the travel lines by an eight-foot grass area.
Okay, and that, that would be on the inside, on, on your building's side of Nalls Mill?
That's correct.
The length of the property, the bridge?
Yes. Well, that, that would be along our property frontage, well, yeah, our responsibility would be along the property frontage.
So are you agreeing your frontage goes to the bridge or, or not to the bridge? Just out of curiosity. I know there's a little gap right there.
I don't have that detail, I can't tell for sure if that's right of way between us and the bridge or private property.
Okay, all right, very good. And then, just in item L on the proffers, I was curious if, you said you were going to use the list of design elements, a combination of, and so I'm assuming that's more than, that's two or more. I didn't know if you all intended to commit to a certain number of those design elements for the building besides.
Yeah, the way it is worded right now, it talks about, by using a combination, again, I think we can take a note to amend that proffer, to commit to, let's see, there's one, two, three, four, there's a half a dozen different elements outlined, we should probably commit to using at least three or four of them. We could certainly do that, we could tie a number into it, so.
That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Clancy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of questions I have, is it your intention to tie into town water?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
How much water will each building consume?
Well, there again, designs are changing every day.
As built, within the next year?
Well.
What, you've currently built, how about that? Let's go with something you know.
Okay, well, I can tell you what, what's being built in the next year will not be built on this property in five years from now. The, the designs are changing. More than likely, there'll be closed-loop systems, which means that you really won't be any, using water, you'll be using some for what they call makeup water, if you have loss in the system, which will be minor, and you'll certainly have what we call the domestic portion of it, you know, the, if you have a kitchen, you have bathrooms, that. I don't see the water being used for process, quite frankly, the way the design is going.
Okay, so what, what was the reference to water and glycol, was that the?
That's the actual closed loop inside the building, going from, from the server racks to the chillers, to the, well, actually, they're not even chillers, they use these air-cooled units.
Right, okay. And then you made mention earlier of their breakers being in short order, and that may delay the project. Is that?
Yeah.
Is that the, the SF6 breakers?
The SF6 is, is a fire prevention liquid that they use in them, that's the fluid.
Right.
The breakers themselves are the, the high voltage breakers that go in the substation, not the breakers in the building or on the site.
Right.
For that, that's medium voltage, these are the high voltage breakers that are in the substation. If you drive past the substation and you look at the equipment these days, there are these really weird spider-looking things, to me, they almost look like the old Jacks, you know, when you played as a kid with Jackson, but they're, they're big, those are the breakers. Those are the things that you can't get today. They take about four years.
Okay, so you're hoping that technology changes.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, and then I have a question about construction traffic and the two entrances that are proposed right now. The curves that are there now and without improving them, you're not going, I, I assume that you're not going to improve them right out the gate for you to start.
I don't think VDOT is ready for, I don't think VDOT, and I'll look to staff, would they want us to go ahead and do that? We can't really do the half section unless they're ready to commit to the other half. That's.
There's a, there's a, I believe, a proffer commitment to do a construction plan routing, a pre-construction plan that will basically identify any potential issues or road improvements that would be necessary. And then, of course, it would identify through the process anything that's damaged along the way from construction traffic that would be basically repaired by the applicant as well. There are, and that's something that we've seen with our other proffers, that we've seen with other data centers, and that's largely followed here with this particular facility. But yeah, construction traffic, the truck routing, you know, is always, that's going to be your higher-end traffic use for this facility, so.
And, and then just one other thing on the, on the construction entrances, VDOT-controlled road always requires, they always require a stabilized entrance and application to them for the location and design of, of that temporary construction entrance. That's not the proffers because it's a, it's a requirement whenever you connect to a state road.
Okay, thank you. And then going back to the three to four buildings and not having a clear height from, from you, we have our standard.
Yeah.
And then having, would you be willing, could there be a situation where instead of three taller buildings, there's four shorter buildings to, one building to you is going to make a big difference in profit?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I'm sure, I'm sure, so.
Absolutely. It could, it could change the viability of the project, frankly, yeah. And the height, again, has to do with what the design is at the time, how much headroom is needed, whether it's, I assume it'll probably be a two-story data center, that's what most are these days, but how much headroom is needed based on the type of cooling system. We really want to leave that to what is generally the site plan process. You know, we're here for the rezoning process, and then there's a site plan process where you have to meet all the bulk standards of the code, and you're allowed certain variations through the tech center overlay. I think the height limitation is a little bit higher in the tech center overlay than it is in the general ordinance.
Typically, and last question, typically per building, what's the employee count look like?
Typically, it's, so let me explain it this way.
And real quick, Sam, can you, oh, Sam, can you bring up staff, the picture of the building with the drawing with the parking lots in front?
So, on a Monday through Friday, nine to five basis, you would probably have at the most 50 people per building. The overnight, you might only have the equivalent of about three people per building, even less, since it's a campus and you can share, you know, the techs from building to building on the nights and weekends. The, the more buildings you have on the campus, the, the number, of course, goes down because you start sharing them, you know.
Sure.
But generally, the industry's been using about 50 people per building on a, on a Monday through Friday, you know, nine to five type basis.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Mr. Grover?
Yep. I just had one question, you know, the site where it's located, being at the bottom of the sewer shed.
Yeah.
You know, next to the treatment plant there at the town. Are you going to allow upstream properties to connect or possibly run through your site to connect to the town treatment plant with sewer?
Yeah, to be honest with you, we, we've been contacted by the folks who are looking to come in with an application on the NBR plan, the Armstrong, the old Armstrong farm, and they wanted to know if they could come through the property. And actually, what it'll take, they want to put a gravity sewer down to the corner of our property, the southeast corner, and then they want to pump it up into the headworks of the plant. We believe we can actually get gravity all the way to the headworks of the plant. There's a pump station out along the front of the, that little brick building with the flat roof on it is the, is the headworks of the plant. It's a pump station where you, you pump everything up so it then runs gravity through the plant. We believe we can get gravity flow into there based on our layout, but they want to come through the property and put a pump station to get to that headworks. We have told them we would, if, if they get approved, we would cooperate and try to work with them. The other thing, though, we warned them was we don't want to put ourselves in a position where we suddenly commit something to them when we've hurt ourselves, especially since we don't know the exact location of the substation, you know, Dominion's going to have to still design that. But, yeah, we would, we would cooperate.
You're open to that, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That was it, certainly that property and, you know, possibly some others, but, yeah, it sounds like you're amenable to that.
Yeah.
Okay, that was it.
Okay, I think we have a set of questions right here that we got to finish up.
Sorry, I just had two more questions, follow-up to Mr. Burton's comment related to Mr. Madison, I guess. The plan is to have a shared use path along the frontage of your property, so you're actually going to construct a half-section road along your frontage with the shared use path? Is that what I'm hearing?
We may have to bond for it, I assume, if, if VDOT, it'd be one thing if.
Or escrow it.
Yeah, so here's what I see, Lance, because the whole, by widening that or widening that R, you know, making that radius longer, that road is probably going to move enough towards us that you probably can't just go do the half-section today, you know, because it'll be separated from the rest of the road. So I think we can, we would certainly build right away, but if VDOT's not ready and the county's not ready, we'd probably have to bond for it.
Right, but you're willing to bond for improvements?
Oh, yes, yes.
For what's equivalent to a half-section?
Yes, yes.
That's, I didn't get that out of the information that we were provided, so I think that's important. And then, second thing was, were there any hand augers done on the site? The reason, only reason I ask is, obviously, I'm involved in another data center that they're blasting at, and they're blasting next to a water tank or other town facilities. So the question is.
I think I know what you're talking about.
Because, because there's an existing facility here, has there been any look at, like, hand augers to determine if there's any rock there, anything like that that could be a problem with it?
We, we actually have a preliminary geotech report that was done.
Okay.
I'll be honest with you, I have not gone through the, the logs for the borings.
Yeah, yeah.
But they didn't raise any issues with us.
Okay, yeah, just.
Yeah.
When you get into construction, you could be concerned, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Zegley, last question?
Yeah, last one, and this is on one of your proffers, Site Access and Transportation 3D. It says, "The post-construction road evaluation report should confirm the roadway conditions that were used for construction. These roads should be restored." I wonder if you're willing to say shall or will in both of those cases?
How do they do their analysis?
I, I guess the one, the one thing that I would say is if the, if the project's going to construct a new, right, the half-section and move the road over, I don't know that you would go back and repair portions of the road that would no longer be in use, so I'm not sure if that's, if, if shall is going to create work that, that shouldn't be done. But I, I don't know if that, if, if changing that to shall is, is going to be acceptable. We can, we can certainly look at, take that back and look.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think the intent here is to manually do unnecessary work, but this one kind of, should kind of says, well, you know, that's a big difference between shall and should.
Understood.
Okay. That's it.
Okay, I think if your presentation is complete, we're going to open a public hearing.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're good? Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing on this subject matter. If anyone has something to say, please raise your hand and be recognized by the chair, and when you come up, state your name. Sir, you're first.
Corey Clinton, the Stevensburg District, and I really appreciate your guys' due diligence and, and looking at this. We're faced with another application, a data center application, and of those data center applications, you know, I'm going, hard to swallow this one, but say, of the ones that, you know, meet the, the county ordinance and the tech zone and a form fit and function in a geographic location, you know, this one, you know, I, would be considered to, to approve. You know, I, I come from a background of 22 years retired IT master chief, working in data centers in California, Kansas, West Virginia. I have a very intimate knowledge of the in, the scope of the workings of the IT infrastructure and facilities management of these facilities, so I know what they are. And I retired and I moved away from them to get out here to Cole Pepper and to live in an agro-central community. I have a farm, and, you know, so it, it heartbreaks me to see what, what these are, I mean, these industrial things, you know, whether solar fields and data centers coming into our county, and the impact that those truly have. You know, so it heartens me to, to say, you know, that this, this probably should be approved for, for the rezoning, and we can address the next steps after that. It's a hard decision for y'all to make, so I really appreciate your due diligence and digging into the application and asking the hard, hard questions, and you guys, I believe you guys have a hard vote to place yourself. I also believe that future applications, if they don't meet those minimum requirements of the county ordinance or rely on a tech zone, shouldn't, shouldn't waste your time, your due diligence and have to do what you're doing today. They should just be flat-out rejected and not, not moved on. There should be, you know, a hard line drawn. So again, appreciate you guys taking the time and doing your study and, and looking out for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
All right, Sarah Parmally, representing the Piedmont Environmental Council. The Piedmont Environmental Council asks that the planning commission recommend a denial of this rezoning for the reasons cited in our written comments and the other concerns raised in the agency reviews, particularly the overall vagueness of this application. We also ask that the planning commission consider the cumulative impact of these highly speculative data centers, especially as they relate to public safety and welfare with regards to municipal water supply, power supply, air quality, and ambient noise. Of the five unbuilt data center campuses already approved in the water and sewer service area, only one has committed to any sort of limited water usage for cooling in their proffers. This potentially puts the Cole Pepper Municipal Water Supply at serious risk should these facilities opt for evaporative cooling, which consumes large amounts of water but is still considered the cheapest option for data center cooling. Even closed-loop systems require intermittent but substantial top-offs, which the town has raised as a concern should these top-offs come at the same time or in a drought. Each campus within this, within the Cole Pepper Water and Sewer Areas Service Area has between three and five large data center buildings planned. Their demands for water are going to add up very quickly. There's also the cumulative energy demand of the previously approved data centers. This is estimated at over two gigawatts, not including this one, which has not even provided a total square footage. That is enough power to, to run a small city. We know that there will be upgrades planned, we may even need a new transmission line going to the tech zone, and we will very likely need significant upgrades to the trunk line running through Stevensburg or the other line running through Jefferson Town to supply power to the town of Cole Pepper. And of course, these costs are going to be borne by all electrical ratepayers, including electric co-ops and the town of Cole Pepper, as well as all the residential ratepayers and the other commercial ratepayers in Cole Pepper, instead of being paid for by the one industry that is driving this expansion. With every new approval, the associated backup generators are also approved by the county. This is increasingly concerning because there is a lot of interest in the data center industry to try to use these diesel generators during times other than emergencies to cut costs and alleviate the grid stress that they have caused. The town of Cole Pepper already does something similar with their backup generators to reduce grid strain during times of peak demand. They are actually compensated by Dominion for doing this. If there are over two gigawatts of diesel generators running during the height of summer, this could seriously affect air quality and ambient noise levels in Cole Pepper, which would in turn have a serious effect on public safety, health, and welfare. We urge you to consider these cumulative effects, and we ask that the county adopt use-specific language to govern the known impacts of this industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, declare the public hearing closed. We're back to commissioners and further thoughts on, on what's been proposed? We're back to commissioners and further thoughts on what's been proposed.
May I ask the applicant just a couple of follow-on questions, please? Sir, you mentioned the direction that the data center industry is moving in toward. So is it your sense that the industry, in terms of the air conditioning, is moving away from the rooftop air conditioning units that are the source of the noise concerns that have affected other communities and going to something that's like a closed loop that's quieter? Is that where you're headed?
No, there's still rooftop units.
Yeah.
Because you still have to get the heat off to the atmosphere. The types of rooftop units, though, are being upgraded, oh gosh, several times a year. The designs are being redone. So there is so much change going on right now that it's almost hard to keep up with it. I just went to a presentation by one of the large manufacturers of the cooling systems last week. They had a presentation in Tyson's Corner. And things are happening so quickly that the good news is things are getting better. And when I say they're getting better, that they're not only able to handle for the industry the higher cooling loads, but they're getting better that they're getting quieter because they're so sensitive to the issues that have come up, especially, Northern Virginia is the largest data center conglomeration in the world, you know, the number of buildings and the amount of power that's being used. And the noise questions that have come up have largely come up, as Mr. Kilby is very well aware, it all started in the city of Manassas, in what's called the Brickyard area, with some of the cooling that's being used there. So changes are being made on a daily basis, literally in design, to try to make these things quieter. But yes, the rooftop units are still there. What we're getting totally away from, or we're trying to get totally away from, are the units that are actually outdoors on the ground that have what they call cooling towers. You'll see a big sheet metal building that almost looks inverted upside down and has big fans on the top. That's where they use a whole lot of water to just, they boil the water off to the air. They take the hot water out of the building and they use fans to just run it into the air, into the atmosphere. That's a very intensive use of power and that's a very intensive use of water. Those we, I haven't seen a new building with those in several years, at least in my experience of what I run into.
Okay. And one final thing is, in the recommendation to the commission from staff, they mentioned being supportive if a number of concerns were addressed. Are you familiar with what those concerns are? I mean, Sam, have you all shared that with the applicant?
Yes, we did. And they're aware of this.
We've addressed most of them.
Okay. So you're addressing?
Oh, yes. Yeah, we've had many meetings with staff on this project. And I believe we're gonna, before we get scheduled with the board, I have several notes from tonight on proffer changes, quite frankly.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, then thank you.
I'll be glad to come back up if something comes up.
Ms. Reams, thoughts?
I mean, my thoughts are, it's, that land is in that technology zone and it makes sense to put it there. I think they understand the concerns and things that we would like to see changed before it goes to the board. So with that, I move that case Z-462-24-1 be moved forward to the board for approval.
Second? Mr. Grofer, thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Thank you very much. We'll move it to the board. Okay? I'll let you guys disperse and then we'll go to our next thing. Yeah, we have some questions of staff next before we get to the PUD. I'll let Mr. Ziggly go first because he asked first.
Yes, Sam, you know, we looked at this data center, at the requirements, we looked at four or five other ones. But are we looking at, what's the cumulative effect of all of this that's happening and, you know, how does that add up? We talked about noise for one data center, but if we have three of them in a row, is that triple the noise and so forth? And it seems to me like that's something we ought to be looking at. Thoughts?
My recommendation is that you all put that on a potential work session item. It's not something that we've scheduled or advertised for discussion tonight, so that is something that I'm not prepared to discuss. I'll leave it at that.
And Mr. Kilby has a question?
I just, kind of follow-up to essentially the recommendation to go to the board. The items that we discussed tonight, you know, someone's gonna look at that and make sure that the items are updated appropriately for going to the board.
Yeah, and that's just normal protocol for us with any application. I mean, you all are a reviewing agency, so there, obviously, there's another step in the process before they can start doing anything, and that's the Board of Supervisors. And that does involve staff as we prepare their application, you know, for the next level. And that does often tweak based on public comments. Wasn't very many public comments, but there's based on public comments and then, of course, feedback from the Planning Commission, so.
Yeah, I just didn't know if we had to make, include that in the actual motion or...
You know, just be reminded that the applicant, you know, it's incumbent upon the applicant, right, to make those changes, you know? And they can listen and they can adjust their application, or they can be comfortable with their current application and move it forward, too, so.
And Madam Chair, just to clarify with staff, so since this is a rezoning to light industrial, the site plan, it won't come back to the Planning Commission? That will be handled at the staff level, right? So we are actually done with this?
That's correct. Right now, that's the case, yes.
Okay. Next item on our agenda, Neil?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have case number ZTA 1224-1. The Planning Commission will consider a revision to the zoning ordinance, Appendix A, Article 8B, Planned Unit Development District, PUD. Proposed revision is intended to realign the district's standards with the goals identified in the 2023 Comprehensive Plan by updating various procedures, provisions, and regulations, namely within the Development Standards Section. The draft is currently prepared and will repeal and replace Article 8B in its entirety. The Planning Commission will determine whether the purpose, whether, excuse me, the proposed ordinance amendment is necessary to further the general purpose of promoting health, safety, general welfare of the public, and other purposes as found in Code of Virginia, Section 15.2, 2283 and 2285.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, we actually do have some potential fancy graphics to show and present tonight, which is rather unusual for a zoning text amendment. But this isn't any usual zoning text amendment. This potentially is a repeal and replace of our Plan Unit Development Ordinance. It is a in-depth ordinance today. We, just as a little background, we have two areas in the county that are zoned PUD today. One is Clevinger-Stonehaven, as it's known now, the northern part of the county that was zoned in 2005 officially and just started recently, the past couple of years. You see it under construction, well under construction. We have a couple hundred homes already there now. The other one is western part of the county, Route 522, the Longley Conference Center. There is a PUD that was approved years ago for that as well. That has not developed at all and has been stagnant since it's been approved. This rewrite, we hope to address some simple things, but not being a simple ordinance. I just want the Planning Commission to know that this is another item that, like your public utility definition that you recently reviewed, that the board actually did approve and adopt last night, by the way. The commercial residential consideration that you had earlier tonight, and then some other forthcoming ones, this is one in the mix. And just as a reminder, that is not uncommon. Whenever we adopt a new comprehensive plan and we review it, a lot of times there's action and goal items in that comprehensive plan. Well, rewriting ordinances can come out of that sometimes, and that's what we're doing. We're in a season of potentially rewriting some zoning ordinances to effectuate vision and goal that's set by the comprehensive plan. And this is one small piece of that, but it is an in-depth ordinance. I'll lead up to say that Harrison's gonna walk you through the PUD. He's gonna come up and walk you through that tonight. Also want the Planning Commission to not feel rushed. This is an in-depth ordinance. You can take time. We have advertised it for a public hearing tonight, so please enjoy that, solicit public feedback if there is any. But don't feel rushed to send it up. You know, there may be some tweaking that you want to do. There may be another whole month, you need to digest it. There's a lot in there, you know? So I just want to make sure that we take our time, that you don't feel rushed to this ordinance. But I think it will be helpful for Harrison to kind of walk through how we envision the changes and how it could be, you know, actually a positive thing for the county. Before he gets up, one other thing. The comp plan is your guide, right? I've mentioned that already tonight. So when thinking about this potential zoning change, don't think that the comp plan says this is gonna go everywhere in the county. That is not the vision, okay? This is specific to certain areas that you all and the Board of Supervisors have identified as potential growth areas. They are very limited, as you remember, in the last rendition of the comprehensive plan. In staff's opinion, this PUD could fit some of those areas that are shown as future growth areas. That will be determined later through a rezoning process, but this may set the stage, so I'll leave it at that. Mr. Perman, floor is yours.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. So as Sam stated, I will be walking through the changes in the ordinance in order. I do have visuals up ahead that will make sense as we move along with the presentation. So starting off with our proposed repeal and replace of the PUD ordinance, Sections 8B-1 and 8B-2 were barely, if at all, changed, since those were more of the statements of what the PUD is going to function as and the procedural aspects in terms of meeting with staff and the Planning Commission. So most of the changes actually begin in 8B-3 Development Standards, starting with that is intended for this new version of the PUD to be in what the Comprehensive Plan identifies as future growth areas that are within the urban services boundary. We actually specifically call them out in the Comprehensive Plan in the text as well, specifically as you see up top, Bragg's Corner Eastern Business Area. We do have areas, this would be one area where PUD would meet with the Comprehensive Plan, especially with areas shown in pink, which is mixed-use. This is not to say that they couldn't be proposed in other areas, but in regards to a comp plan analysis, it's within these growth areas and generally where it's shown as mixed-use that a PUD would work. Another area in, another future growth area where this could work is in the Catalpa Future Growth Area, specifically in the area we showed as pink along 229. Again, depending on the specific application, a PUD could work in other parts of the growth area, just depending on the intensity and the uses provided by that specific application. I will say, we did not include the southern growth area, which is where the retirement homes, where Three Flags are, because we specifically call out in the Comprehensive Plan that those areas should not be rezoned since they're already zoned for or in the process of being developed into intensive residential uses. So the thought behind the comprehensive plan is it's generally for around the town in the service areas, specifically the Bragg's Corner area and the Catalpa Future Growth Area. So moving right along in, actually, this is getting a little ahead of myself, sorry. So the first major change to the PUD is the minimum district size. As code currently states, it requires 200 acres to be in a PUD. So more or less, this makes it so you can only have extremely large master plan developments such as Clevinger's Corners/Stonehaven or the property out by Boston to use the PUD. Since our comp plan wants to shift our growth areas away from the very large tracts in the rural areas towards the town, staff saw it as imperative that we shrink it down to 20 acres, which could accommodate a lot of the existing parcels, whether vacant or combined if they are developed with older buildings around the town. Additionally, we went through and outlined, and updated and outlined the uses regarding the PUD, just to clarify what the locality is looking for. In these designs, we outline the whole aspect of different residential uses, commercial uses, et cetera. And as you could probably see in that use matrix outlined, the idea of the PUD is to be very flexible in regards to residential and commercial uses, to really maximize the ability of shifting our growth into the town areas and shifting away from the rural Let me just fast-forward ahead real quick. Do apologize. But as you could see, majority of the uses would be permitted by right through the rezoning process. And as you could see up in the future land use plan and in our existing land use map, there are no other areas around the town that are zoned as a PUD. So even if the PUD is approved by the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, NAP could still gonna have to go through a whole rezoning process into the PUD, just to be able to abide by these new standards. Moving right along, within the PUD, we are trying to incorporate a balance between focusing all the growth into the town but not turning the whole entire town, say, for lack of a better term, an urban concrete park. Specifically, we, within the PUD, we have two, let me try to find the word here, two use categories. So you have mixed-use, which is basically all the kind of development you can do, and then open space. And we are proposing that in the PUD, that unless you meet certain incentives, which I will cover later on in this presentation, half of the PUD is gonna have to be conserved in open space. But we will get to that in a moment. And basically, let me just see here real quick, I think I just fast-forwarded it on the page real quick. Now, before we get into what those incentives would be, I just kind of want to go over some of the, what staff has kind of gone over in terms of lot sizes, in terms of use types and whatnot. So specifically, you will see that we are not proposing to have lot size minimums or lot coverage or lot widths. For that, we, staff goes with that to allow for the maximum flexibility in keeping it only at a gross density regulation. This would allow for different parcel configurations that would be conducive to the denser development we are trying to shift into the town. So for example, with the proposals we have in here, we are proposing a gross density of the entire PUD to be 16 units per acre. And we have some visualizations that kind of show what that would look like if you have individual parcels of equal size. So for example, under this, under these configurations, this is kind of how many single families you could have in a single acre. Zero lot line detached, where basically you have only a side yard and then it's kind of shared between your neighbors. Duplexes, cottage courts, which is where you kind of have a whole bunch of houses on a shared piece of property, shared by the neighbors of their land. Townhomes, multifamily, mixed-use, let's go live work, that was a little issue out there, do apologize. And then manufactured home communities, more or less manufactured home communities or mobile home communities, that's just the technical term that they call it, since usually they're just placed right in the ground so they'll be mobile anymore. Commercial. And this kind of leads up to our PUD incentive. So as I said earlier, under the general PUD structure, half the land's gonna have to be preserved in open space. However, to incentivize even higher quality developments, we've devised an incentive where basically if they meet a specific list of requirements, they can increase the amount of buildable land by 20%. So then that means instead of 50% being conserved in open space, only 30% would be conserved in open space. And I'll just go through the list real quick of what those incentives would be. So obviously, we have some examples that we normally expect from sizable developments, such as recreational trails, paths and trails, commons and public areas. One aspect is we always see vegetated over parry and buffers, but we wanted to bump it up from the usual 50 feet to 100 feet, since we do have impaired streams in river areas in the county. since we do have impaired streams and river areas in the county. So the higher the repairing buffers, the less impact on the water quality you can see. We do have a caveat that within those one hundred foot repairing buffers, that paths and trails, stormwater management and necessary roads, utilities and easements would be allowed within those buffers to allow that flexibility because we know just based on site design, sometimes that's going to happen. Moving right along, another requirement would be that they do not use any nutrient credits to meet water quality standards, that we would want to have them meet their requirements through their own BMPs. A lot of developments use nutrient credits to varying degrees to meet DEQ standards. And we feel like if we are going to allow such a dense amount of development on such a large amount of land, even though it's close to the town, that they should be able, that they should provide above average environmental quality to their developments. Moving right along, we have something, this might sound a little bit new, but having at least seventy-five percent of all primary structures be considered solar ready, where the structures are designed for potential use of onsite solar generation. While this does seem very nuanced, I will say as distributed solar keeps on getting more and more adopted by, you know, people across the country, there's a lot of issues where even new homes aren't designed to be amicable for the installation of solar. And you could say an argument for trying to encourage distributed solar is you're allowing, you're, excuse me, I do apologize. You're allowing residents to generate their own power, thus being able to be a little bit more resilient in their power generation, be less constrained by, say, by utilities in terms of their rate paying. Additionally, in the very large scope of things, by having mass adoption of distributed solar, you could potentially decrease the need for further utility scale generation or transmission towers. I will admit, yes, that is a very long-term, long-scope thing, but it always starts with a small step. So we thought that if we're going to allow these developments, which will have an impact on our power generation, they could at least do a very small part in trying to offset some of that. Another aspect is having seventy-five percent of residential structures being EV ready. This is not saying that they need to install EV chargers on their residential developments. This is just saying that they configure the homes or the shared parking to be EVSE ready outlet. So then if the residents decide that they want to have an EV charger, it's easy for them to just install the actual station. A lot of residents in their homes have to do a lot of rewiring, a lot of electrical alterations to be able to shift towards electric vehicles. We see that as something that we might want to have in our ordinance as an incentive due to the ability to, while we will see an increase in traffic, we could at least mitigate potentially the increase in emissions from vehicular traffic by incentivizing EV, which again, we would only be incentivizing EVSE outlets, which based on research does appear that would be only a minimal increase in cost in home construction because it's just designing out how the houses would be able to facilitate that. Additionally, we do say at least five percent of all off-street parking for non-residential use categories, so specifically commercial, round it up, would have EVSE installed spaces. And the reason why we're saying that is usually with commercial properties, they're usually owned by a corporate landlord and then the buildings themselves are rented out towards businesses. So it makes it kind of harder to have an EVSE ready outlet and then be like, okay, who then builds it? And the reason why we want, why staff thinks going EVSE installed is a good idea is you're starting to see slow rollout throughout communities across America to have EV chargers. And at least from a staff perspective, it might be a good idea to try to make sure that we don't fall behind the curve and become quote unquote, an EV charging desert. You're starting to see localities across Virginia have EV chargers, whether at private operations or in public operations. And as you can see over and over the years, more and more people are adopting EV, electric vehicles, whether they're hybrid plug-in or whether they're fully electric. So by trying to incentivize, you know, this current changing trend, it won't leave Culpeper in the dust and won't, I do apologize. It won't make us try to struggle to catch up if, say, some of our surrounding localities start really heavily adopting this and people are just like, well, I can't visit Culpeper because I can't charge my car. I can't even live in Culpeper or I can't do business in Culpeper, et cetera. And that's more or less the long and the short of it, of the PUD. I know that was a lot and that was a huge kind of like crash course into it. I will say something we did not have in the visuals is we also have a little talk about circulation and connectivity regarding the designs of the PUD, specifically talking about how the PUD should have street designs that should promote connectivity and support other multimodal transportation options through provision of things such as sidewalks on both sides of the street, crosswalks combined with traffic calming measures to enhance the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists, intersections and roundabouts that use traffic calming measures to enhance the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists, protected buffered bicycle lanes if they are to be located on the streets, and then street trees and other vegetation to provide buffering, shading, cooling and aesthetic value. Reason why we identified these is, as I stated before, if we are to, if the county is to allow more dense development beyond what is normally allowed, we should be, we should expect in return a higher quality developments. Additionally, we mentioned aspects such as highlighting connecting to the existing roadwork and the separation of shared use paths, mentioning the installation of bike storage if they are to provide bicycle infrastructure on the properties, encouraging roundabouts over signed or signalized intersections at key intersections of the PUD. As we've seen on other developments, we are starting to have an issue where you start having street light, a street light after street light after street light, causing concerns of trying to time them all right and then everyone being stuck at red lights at different areas. And we have seen the success of roundabouts here in Culpeper County in creating a smooth flow and reducing serious accidents. We do also encourage more interconnection of the streets and to avoid cul-de-sacs and dead end roads unless they are to be stubs that will connect to future development or existing development. And, let me see what else. And in just also incentivizing connections to the town of Culpeper in and of itself, so it's not just on to county roads, that if it is a parcel that is adjacent to the town of Culpeper and it is feasible to try to connect to the town in and of itself. Just finally, a few last things to round up and to mention. We currently are suggesting decreasing the parking minimums in these PUDs by twenty-five percent since we are trying to incentivize more mixed use and dense development in these areas. We did have a supervisor at the rules committee mention investigating incentivizing parking garages instead of just general parking. We have not explored that yet, but I thought it'd be important to at least just mention that was discussed by the rules committee. Other than that, the only other notable aspect is that they would be connected to public utilities, that we wouldn't be seeing massive drain fields, massive wells, that this would be connected to the town water sewer. And just to wrap it up, I just want to say, I know that is a lot. As Sam said earlier, there is no ticking time clock on this, so if this needs either a work session or to be revisited or to be digested more, that is a hundred percent accommodable by staff and by the rules committee. The rules committee and the BOS did not set a timeframe to hear back on this, so the commission is free to chew on this as much as they would like. Trying to see what else here real quick. And just as a final little summary, that eventually if this repeal and replace of the PUD does occur, in terms of what's currently on the ground, nothing will change. A developer who would want a PUD would still have to come through staff, the planning commission and the board supervisors to be able to get a PUD. So this would not change Clevinger's Corner, Stonehaven. This would not change the parcels out in Boston. And this would not affect any current zoning here in the county Culpeper. And I'm free to answer any questions that you may have, which I feel like might be a lot because I know I kind of ramped through a lot of stuff.
Okay. I'm going to thank you for your presentation and you put a lot of work into it. And I'm going to make a statement and I'll let everyone else make a statement. But we have been, in the last thirty days, talking about reducing density. And this is promoting density increase in the town. And the question is, does the town pay for anything to the schools? I know the answer, no, they do not. So we are encouraging more town development without any offset to what that will do to the school system. No?
Not in this particular case, no. This would be a rezoning, so you would expect proffers to be submitted with something like that. And this doesn't impact the town at all. These would be, this is a county ordinance.
I know, yeah.
They may be near the town edges, but
They need sewer and water.
The town has a specific zoning ordinance and their own regulations for that. You are correct in that there are several existing subdivisions that are being built where there are no contributions other than normal regular tax dollars to the public school system. That is not the case actually with Clevinger's, which has been around for
That one, I agree.
Nineteen years. And that would not be the case for any future rezoning in staff's anticipation.
So in all the incentivizing, okay, in all this incentivizing to head to EV outlets and solar setups, I think that we need to look at that school issue because it will be around the town environs because they have the sewer and water. And they will then extend the boundary, maybe try to annex. But I seriously think that there should be some other component. I can't do it like this.
Yeah.
You know? I believe that we are on one side of our mouth saying, we don't want, we want to, no more density. We're going to now turn around and impact another zoning level, if you will. And this is total opposite. We're going to encourage all of it to keep going around the town.
It is opposite and the fact that it's pointed towards the area where we show potential growth. And if you, you know, my reading of the comprehensive plan is that we don't encourage growth in a lot of other areas except in the future growth areas. So I think that actually is supportive of the comprehensive plan.
Well, who can use it then? Because, I mean, there is, you have to have seventy-five percent. Fifty percent of the land will not be developable. Right, you can't, all right? So it makes it a very difficult component that we've set up, even if we sit around and massage it. That's all I have to say. All right, commissioners, we'll wait for him, I guess. Wait a minute.
I guess I just had
So sorry, I was going to pull up the slides again. I think I actually goofed up the system, I'm so sorry.
All right, so Mr. Ziggly, I mean, Mr. Lance will go first. Go ahead, Lance.
Whoever.
Going this way.
Yeah, I guess my only thing was about the twenty acres. You know, if I think about it, you know, and I guess I don't know if that particular size has been evaluated from a planning perspective. In other words, if you take twenty acres, you take ten of it as open space, that leaves ten acres of a site. You take that ten acres and then you subdivide it with roads, sidewalks and the other like of that, what's your actual buildable footprint? And are you getting what you want from a planning exercise out of that size? So to me, the size may not be the right size, even though you have parcels of land that are under twenty acres.
Just keep in mind that the density levels are increasing probably about double than what you've seen today in any zoning category that we have potentially. So, you know, sixteen units to the acre would encourage, or, you know, on a smaller track for you if you're considering a PUD to look at a multifamily project to be able to realize any type of footprint that's going to realize any type of density at all.
And I will say, based off of current code, our highest density per acre is twelve, which is in the R four. I still believe that still has, I think, like a, not a floor area ratio, but a land cover ratio and other aspects as well. Staff figured that by having that whole fifty percent covered in open space, not only did staff see that as a trade-off for the highest density per acre allowed in this proposed PUD, but also to steer developers towards going through that incentive program to get even, to guarantee even higher quality developments. But that is definitely a fair point. We can definitely easily
Well, I was just wondering if you've actually laid out a site with this example to see if it works? You know, what it would look like?
We did some very
Conceptual planning, you know, from that perspective. Because, you know, you start taking apartment complexes and things like that and you figure, okay, sixteen times ten, rocket science, it's a hundred and sixty units. And I've got to put a road and everything else, access in there and parking and sidewalk, will it fit? You know, or if really it's going to be eighty dwelling units, even for an apartment. So then it's, you can't really get there unless you have a more, larger site.
And we can definitely try and start working on some of those kind of concept planned examples. I will say that as part of the reason why we wanted to get rid of the lot minimum sizing, just to allow some more flexibility in designs. I will say we do have a section in the proposal, let me just try to flip to it real quick.
I guess the concern about no frontage requirements or no lot?
We do have lot setbacks. We'll still have, you know, twenty-foot setbacks from the front, fifteen from the sides, twenty from the rear and accessory from the, and five-foot accessory setbacks. The reason why we didn't want to go with lot coverage was, again, in terms of the flexibility of what we want to try to promote in these growth areas. Specifically, we start also mentioning that you can have, and this is similar to the R four in our commercial zones, where you can have multiple detached printable structures on the same lot. And then also we make a specific call out for live work structures as well, allowing those where at max fifty percent of the square footage can be gone for residential as well. The reason why we just didn't have like lot coverage fronts is just again, for that flexibility.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, if I wanted to abuse it, I'm going to come in there, I'm going to put fifty pipe stem lots in, there are five lots on each one. I'm going to have multiple entrances all along the road.
And that is very, that is definitely a fair
Which may not be the best scenario, what we want.
Oh, definitely. But I will say that, you know, we do have comments in here regarding the, regarding connectivity and site aspects in general, what we kind of look for in these PUDs. And again, this would all have to go through the planning commission and the board supervisors. And if, you know, for lack of a better term, if developer tried to, you know, do what you just proposed, you could, it could, we feel like this has been designed to where you could say, the comprehensive plan, the spirit of the code did not accept that and thus we're going to deny that application kind of aspect.
I'm not saying it couldn't work, I'm just saying
Oh, yeah, definitely.
We'd have to think about it a little bit more.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Keith.
I'm just going to say that this is a lot and I think that we need to table it and I'll take time to look through it, come up with suggestions, recommendations and questions and not make any rash decisions, but take our time with it.
Okay. Keith?
Thanks, Harrison. I've got a couple of questions. This reads as if it may have come from somebody else, some other, so is this all staff generated?
Yes.
So there are no examples of this exists, like to get back to Lance's point, this is, doesn't exist anywhere else out there in the world where it successfully operates?
The only quote unquote influence you could say is we looked at how other similar planning developments are happening, say, Faukeer County, Stafford County, Spotsylvania County. We did some kind of code research to look at some comparisons and then compared that with what our comprehensive plan states in terms of what it's looking for versus what we've seen with previous developments and where there's been repetitive staff concerns or concerns from the commission or board supervisors in terms of what they've been talking about with how developments currently have. But this wasn't influenced by, say, a certain development or through that kind of aspects, yeah.
Okay. On the solar ready homes, would that preclude someone from buying a property and then planting trees around their house that eventually would produce the amount of sunlight hitting the roof?
That is actually a good question. We can definitely
My anticipation is that we would develop an ordinance that would not regulate that. I can assure you of that.
Okay.
I think that needs to be self-regulated.
All right. And then the final thing I've got is, so if this had been in effect in Clevinger's Corners, as it is now, would have been impossible? Or would it just have had to have had a lot more open space or just not even doable?
It has several hundred acres of open space. It's got like three or four hundred.
It's up against a golf course.
All right. So what's being built there now wouldn't be substantially different if this had been in effect?
That is definitely one interpretation. Potentially, you could see different designs and a little bit more flexibility on their side. I mean, but yes, I think what you see at Clevinger's could be something that could have been, that could be done with this reinterpretation. But hopefully this pushes the scales towards different kind of configurations and whatnot.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, go ahead, Doug.
A lot of it's market driven. What's selling, what developers want to build, that sort of thing.
Yeah, they're not putting in the perifia on the pretty.
One thing that I'll echo with Commissioner Grover saying is that One thing that I'll echo with, with Commissioner Grover saying, is that's entirely absolutely true. And what we want to try to do is create a zone that actually allows flexibility. Right now, the zoning districts that we have, there's hardly any flexibility at all. You know, you have to meet the standard, the standard, the standard. And that's okay, when it's worked, it's produced, I think, viable, good neighborhoods in Culpeper. This just opens the door for a little more flexibility, for not only uses, but also sizing and product type as well. So there is an opportunity, and just please keep in mind, this is not going to apply to any existing area, unless it comes through a specific rezoning request that will have its own process, that would include, hopefully, proffers. You know, that we're going to analyze where it is, how close it is to the school, what intersection needs to be improved. That doesn't, that can't be addressed by an ordinance. It has to be addressed through an application, you know. So those, these are just kind of sets, the parameters of the guidelines, if you will. I see the two big take-homes. One, it does reduce that acres threshold initially. 200 acres is too high. Whether 20 acres is good, I don't know for sure right now, but it's something we can discuss. The other thing is that it increases the density potential. You know, that's a scary thing, but it's a good thing when you're trying to make a development that is, has mixed-use potential actually work, you know, and function. We have one PUD on the books that's actively developing. They're doing an okay job with what they have, and what was approved years ago. It is a struggle to actually get a true mixed-use product, to Doug's point about market conditions and what actually drives things. We're just trying to kind of open the playbook a little bit, if you will, you know. And to echo Katie's comment, I'm ready for you all to make a motion to table it. I'm also ready for you all to digest it and send us comments over the next 30 days, 60 days, whatever the table request is. I'm also willing to give Harrison's time up, if you want to call him, you know, as a one-on-one, if you don't understand something. Because it does take time to digest it, to understand how it can apply. So feel free to do that, too, so.
Okay, go ahead, Doug.
I'm just a little confused by the, I guess, the directive, like what you were saying, Cindy. You know, it looks like we're trying to reduce development in the outlined areas, and I do understand that. And there's a concern about schools, having to build schools, bringing more schoolchildren into the county, yet this is increasing density. And I understand it's trying to focus it around the town, but yet it's still increasing density, bringing more kids to the county, you know, putting a burden on the schools. I just, I don't know, I'm kind of confused by that. Now, what you presented, you guys did a fantastic job, and I do understand all of it, in providing more options to the developers, market changes. But again, the directive from the board, I guess, I'm kind of confused, because it seems like we're doing two different things at the same time.
To speak on that, I know what was proposed has been on the extreme side. We can definitely work on, obviously, we were planning on working on revisions to this PUD after tonight, for sure. This was more just the intro, general concept, talking of the idea, and then working on based off that. So we can definitely look at changes regarding, like, the amount of dwelling units per acre and certain other requirements and that stuff. I think, just as Sam has mentioned earlier, just trying to follow that con-plan of more growth around the town, less around the country. But, you know, if there's more of an, if there's more of a will from the Planning Commission to really change that, and just be like, yes, focused growth around town, but maybe not, like, ramp it up to like a 10 kind of stuff, we can definitely work on revisions to that as well.
Alright, couple of questions. The increase in our population, I know in our, you know, the ordinance, or our comprehensive plan, rather, states, you know, moderate growth, slow growth. I'd like to know if we are currently experiencing slow growth. It seems to me right now, it's through the roof. It's, there's a lot. So, and the second question I have is, how did we get to 20 from 200? Was it recommended by the board to come down to us? Was it a staff recommendation? Was there a study? Was, like, how did we get, that's a drastic difference.
So to the 20 acres, we got, well, originally, with the reason we wanted to shrink down from 200 was just, again, that there's not a lot of parcels around the town that are 200 acres, I would pick that. Reason why we went to 20 is, we designed that in regards to the whole incentive, incentive program with the whole 50% open, 50% buildable. When we were designing this based off of that idea, it did not make sense to be like, okay, this can be on a 10-acre parcel, where five is buildable, five is not buildable. So we designed, we came to the 20 acres based off of that whole 50 open space, 50 not. Obviously, easily could change that and change the incentive program as well to allow for it either being smaller, or if the commission thinks it needs to be a larger minimum as well, either way is valid.
Yeah, and just for the record, I'm-
It was directed, Commissioner Clancy, by the board, to hit a specific number, so.
Alright, thank you. I just, it just, I wondered, 200 to 20, that's-
Yes, very, very.
Big jump.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
I'll just say that, I want to get into the language with you about this, some of it's vague. And like, for instance, if you're planning a project, you need to know where to go, and if I was trying to maximize stuff, I'd see some loopholes. One of the examples would be, let's see. The board shall proceed in general, as provided for in other rezoning applications. The board may approve the application as proposed, or approve with specific modifications of the development plan, or approve some other suitable zoning district, or deny the application. So is, as a developer, is that my way in, to just-
Where is that specifically in the-
Just pivot.
Page four of 18.
Yeah.
What was that?
Page four of 18.
Okay.
It would be under C, a third of the way down.
Okay, yeah.
So, so could you pivot and just be like, well, board, can we just have a different zoning? Can we have R4?
I will admit, I think that is just an oversight, because that's what's currently in our current PUD. And I think, when we were doing the initial draftings on this a while ago, I think at first pass, we didn't think a lot of that. We figured that this, since this was more procedural stuff in terms of how it goes through the staff, the Planning Commission, and the board, we thought that that stuff didn't need as much of a look-over than the 8B-3, but that's definitely a good point. And staff can definitely take a look at that and revise that. I'll just say that that wording is currently in our existing PUD ordinance, as it stands, I do believe.
And so the only other general elusive might be your future growth areas. And they're sort of colored ovals, right? They're reaching, they're orange ovals over a general area, and they don't follow specific parcels, right?
So, yes, in that, for mapping purposes, they're the general ovals. But with the specific future growth area maps, and in the text, we do add additional qualifications to what we consider as the future growth area.
So you would be, would you be picking specific current parcels? I mean, or would we do an overlay district, or do, you know, I love that word.
So generally, the way we have it in the text, if I'm remembering, if I have to have my head correctly, is we say that generally, the PUD would be something suitable in mixed-use, in areas shown as mixed-use in the future land use plan. But that's not saying that it can only be in those. The way we are construing the PUD is that it could be proposed in something, say, in something shown as residential low density, or residential medium-high density. But we do have wording where we say that it should reflect the intensity shown in the future land use plan. So, for example, the way staff has construed it, is that if someone proposes something, say, on this large 300-acre parcel, and it's a huge mixed-use development, we'll be like, well, that's not fully the spirit of the comprehensive plan. Yes, we show that a PUD can go here, but we also, it should respect and reflect the density shown in the future land use plan. I know it's a little complicated, a little bit, a little bit much, but-
So you would, you would support a PUD with single-family dwellings?
I mean, possibly.
Theoretically, just-
Theoretically, that is possible. It's, the idea is, well, the idea is that we're trying to incentivize as many of any types, and then obviously, at the end of the day, it's up to the market and up to the developer. A large idea was trying to not only make it feasible to do other kinds of housing developments, because with the way our code currently is, it is kind of hard to stray away from a single-family development. And to, with that whole open space incentive program, to try to steer them more towards different design variations. But at the end of the day, I do believe a commissioner said earlier, I forgot which one, I do apologize, that it's really market-driven, and, you know, just based off of the developer, at the end of the day.
Okay. Alright, thanks.
Do you have anything right now?
Real fast, my only comment here is, and I agree, there's a lot here to go over with. I think we need to digest it, and I think we need to get back together and discuss this. But when you talk about the 20% give-back on the open, on the open space, I guess, and if I read that just like this, it seems to me if I put a path in, I'd get 20% off. So it seems like maybe it's up to 20%, and then, you know, that'll be determined by how many and what level of implementation of those listings that you have.
Yes, I can see that, I can see that confusion. I think that was a word change that hadn't been made, because originally, we had proposed, like, up, like, different percentages based off how many were, how many incentives were provided. We moved away from that, because we thought that was even more complicated than what needs to be. So that could be just a word change.
I just think it'd be a little bit more specific than what we have right now. Like I said, if I read this, if I put in a path, I'd take, get 20% back. Doesn't say you have to have a network or anything like that, you know?
Yeah, we can definitely add more specifications to all these. And I will say, we have it worded where they'd have to meet every single one of those incentives. So paths, open space, repair and buffers, nutrient credits, et cetera. So it wouldn't be just like, you have to meet one of these things, so you can't just plop down a path and call it a new.
Yeah, well, I assume that'll be a judgment call.
Yeah, but, yeah. And we can definitely add more specific, more specific, more specific.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Harrison. We have to do two things. We have to have a public hearing on this in just a few minutes. But it seems to me like we need to either have someone from the board come in, or we have a meeting with the board of supervisors, and figure out what their objectives are. Because it's not crystal clear to me if we're going to, on one hand, worry about growth out in the county, and then, on the other hand, this is a high-density project, and pick 20 acres kind of out of the blue, and I look at all the cuts there. I don't even, there's one thing that's 20 acres, that's going to be the data center, I think, and there's a floodplain through it. So, you know, the use of it needs to have some, it needs to get pared down, pared down, whatever the word. Anyway, let me have the public hearing, and then let's decide what we'll do. Chair opens up the public hearing. Anyone that's left here, would you like to make comments on this subject? If so, feel free. No, 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 and no, okay? I may leave this public hearing open, because we might want it down the road.
Yes, ma'am, that's a good idea.
Yes, I'm not going to close the public hearing. But I think we've addressed that for tonight. And board, what do you want to do?
Madam Chairman, I move that ZTA-12-24-1 be tabled to the regularly scheduled July Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, we have another item to discuss about our next set of meetings, because we have to have some work sessions, so let staff talk about it.
Madam Chair, we have, of course, a regular scheduled June meeting, which will be June 12th, is your next meeting. We also would like to have you all look at your calendars. Ms. Green sent an email this afternoon to try to gauge your calendar for potentially the end of this month, and also a potential work session in June to discuss a couple of different topics that probably should be discussed on different nights in a work session format. The first being a large rezoning request that the applicant's seeking to have a work session prior to having a formal public hearing. Planning Commission has the option of doing that or not, but they are requesting a work session. And we're targeting two dates for that, potentially of May 23rd was the original potential target, which I'm going to have you automatically scratch that one out now. That one does not work for my schedule, I'm not available that night. The other one would be May 30th, and that one is still on the floor. That one works for the applicant, if it works for at least five of you all. Looking into June, when you look at your regular scheduled week, which is the 12th, we'd like for you to look at your calendars for either the 10th, 11th, or 13th, that same week. So you would meet twice, once for your regular scheduled agenda, and once as a work session to discuss other potential ordinance changes with the A1 RA districts.
And if, I can ask real quick, was that the-
I'm sorry.
The one that you sent out in the email with the calendar link, or whatever the link was? Alright, thank you.
Hopefully, you all can access your email. Tomorrow, we are doing changes, as you know, tonight, to the email system, so hopefully it works. And if it does not, we will schedule as we can. But if, Madam Chair, if those dates don't work, we'll just keep working to try to find dates that do. Chairman Reeves may not be able to make it for a little while longer, you know? So we'll have to keep that in mind, that'll potentially reduce our number down to eight, so we'll have to work to try to still find that quorum number of five. So I just wanted to mention that as well. We don't have to decide anything tonight. If you have five of you that want to volunteer to say, yep, I'm available on Thursday, May 30th, great, we'll send an email to the applicant, schedule that tomorrow. That would be the first one that I would like to achieve before we get into the other one.
Will you give us some kind of packet, since it's not too far off?
Yeah, we can have the applicant, they have an application that's been submitted and revised.
So we don't just show up, right?
Yeah. We try to start those, it's up to the Planning Commission, we try to start those early, er, than seven, if possible. We have done them at six in the past, so.
Anyone else that can't come on the 30th for the first one that he's asking about? Thursday, the 30th? Cannot? Okay, and he can't. You can. You don't, you can. I think I can, that's three. You're four, and you're maybe. Okay, so it's... What? Okay. Alright, well, let's just let it go to the email process, but you don't have it, one, two, three, four.
Madam Chair, let me bring up, let me bring up one other thing, just real quick. So Mr. Grober reminded me, the one work session, he will not be able to participate in. He has a conflict of interest, so that's down to seven, if Sanford can't make it, so.
On which, is that the May 30th, that one with the big rezoning? Okay. Alright, well, I guess we respond through our emails.
If you can, that would be helpful, yeah.
If you can, we will. Anything else?
No, ma'am, that was it.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Thanks.